All right, so we have a quorum, but I'm sure the other trustees will be here shortly. So I am, because we have a very long agenda this evening, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And it's so nice to have faces, lovely, happy faces in front of us this evening. So welcome to everyone for joining us. My friends right up here in front, it's nice to see friendly faces. All right. So we will get started with, hold on one second here and let me get everything set So our first item was the resolution for honoring our outgoing student trustee, but Manvier said he was going to be about 10 minutes late. So can we move to? I did. Oh, I'm sorry. I did not. I called the meeting to order, but roll call, please, Catherine.
Trustee Michael Baldini.
Here.
Trustee Jennifer Baker.
Here.
Trustee Amy Martenson.
Here.
Trustee Rafael Rios.
Here.
Trustee Revzara Segura.
Here.
Trustee Kyle Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Mary Ann Mancuso.
Here.
Thank you. All right. And as I was saying, the first item on the agenda, resolution honoring our outgoing student trustee, Manvier's running just a little bit late, so we can, which would you say to go on to next? Thoughts?
Go to 3-2.
Go to 3-2? Okay. Annual review and approval of privileges grant to the student trustee included board policy BP 2015. Is there a motion to approve? This is, everybody's had an opportunity to look at it.
So moved.
Second. Oops. There's a bunch of seconds. We have a motion from trustee Baker and a second from either Baldini or Segura.
Mr. Baldini can take it. Trustee Baldini can.
All right.
Lady from the north.
Okay. All in favor? Are we doing this electronic?
We can, if you like.
Sure, let's do that.
Online voting has been opened. Mr. Baldini.
Aye.
And.
Waiting for it to boot.
You don't see it?
No.
Mr. Rios, do you see yours? If you'd like to vote verbally, I can just mark it.
Baldini, aye.
Trustee Rios.
I'm a little more tech savvy than Mr. Baldini. I just voted.
I see you now. Motion carries unanimous.
All right. We will then move on to the swearing in of our new student trustee. Josefa, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to recognize Ben Casada, please introduce, and then I will come up.
Good afternoon, board members, faculty, staff, and the community. I'm Ben Casada, coordinator of student life. It is my pleasure to introduce Josefa Kawaja. He is our newest elected student trustee. Josefa comes from Pakistan and immigrated to the U.S. in 2016. He is now attending Napa Valley College where he plans to major in molecular biology. Please extend a warm welcome.
Come on over and we'll administer the oath. All right? So if you raise your right hand, aye in your name.
Aye, Josefa Kawaja.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties into which.
The duties into which.
I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah. You're elected. You have to now.
Hello, everyone. I did not prepare speech, but I will say something. I'm really honored to be here, to be elected as a student trustee. I know it is a job that requires effort, time management, and would require me to come to the meetings whenever they're held. I will try to do my duties to the best of my capabilities and will not let you guys down. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just mention, too, that they definitely raise leadership in this family because his brother Hamza, I believe you just took on a leadership role as well, right?
Yes.
As.
Vice President, ASNVC.
Fantastic. And Manvier not here yet, so we will move on to 3.4. Associated students of Napa Valley College officer recognition. Is that Ben?
Yes, it is.
Yes, unfortunately, most of these executives, they are actually classic. So.
I think it would be good, why don't you just read for the record, Ben, and recognize their effort.
Okay. Certificates of appreciation are being awarded to the student government officers. These student government officers have performed their duties in an exemplary and highly professional manner. Their efforts in student advocacy, production of student-led events, and shared governance has had a direct impact on student life and has contributed to the success of the Office of Student Life and the Associated Students Leadership Program. Their continued evolution to become the benchmark of student leadership amongst their peers in the California Community College Systems has greatly progressed this year due to their commitment to excellence. The ASNVC executive boards holds regular meetings on campus. Students are encouraged to attend and voice their opinions on campus and community-related issues. The Associated Students of Napa Valley College, ASNVC, financially supports student life by providing services to students through the ASNVC Office Building 1300, Room 1342. The people listed, did you want me to go through those names?
However you'd like to do it, it's fine.
Okay. Rafael Monzo, president. Manvier Sandhu, student trustee. Pablo Leon, director of finance. Iljes Otiko, director of public relations. Gladys Aguilar Vatal, director of legislative affairs. Marcos Coronado, director of events. Hamza Kamaran Kawaja, sergeant-at-arms. Wally Wallace, Senator of inclusivity. Jessica DeLeon, Senator of social sciences. Dominic Doctor, Senator of arts and humanities. Amanda Ilang Ilang, Senator of, oops, sorry, language and development studies. Lucia Sanchez, Senator of business and computer studies. Anthony Piladi, Senator of physical education. And Allo Rivera, Senator of health occupations.
Thank you, Ben. Congratulations. We appreciate the work that ASNVC does.
Thank you, Ben. And if you'll just pass on to the students, too, that I'm sure that all of the board is honored in what part we've been able to contribute to their success. And I'm sure that there's a senator or two in that group there. They're an outstanding group of people, and you've done a great job. Thank you. And as we await Manvier, we'll move on to 4.1. Outstanding Napa Valley College dorm athletes. Is that Bob Harris? No. Don, oh, Jared Dunlap.
All kinds of people.
Lots of people. Hello.
Hello, trustees. I'm Jerry Dunlap, the athletic director, faculty, staff, administrator, students. We have here some of our athletes. Thank you for recognizing their academic performances and athletic performances this year. On average, our student athletes have completed 14.4 units per semester with a 3.2 grade point average. So we're doing excellent work, not only on the basketball courts, the soccer fields, baseball fields, but in the classroom. We'd also really like to thank, before we get moving, Howard Willis, all the counselors, Rodney Webster, our athletic counselor, and a lot of the staff and our coaches for doing all the hard work that they do for our student athletes. Our athletes that we brought here tonight are kind of an eclectic group that we drew from, so I'm going to introduce you to them, give you just a little brief background about them. First of all, we have Bianca Gonzalez. She is a sophomore from Napa High School. She's a soccer player. Bianca has a 4.0 last semester during the soccer season, and Bianca has completed 102 units at Napa Valley College already.
Wow.
Also, we recently learned that Bianca will be transferring on to UC Berkeley in the fall, so we're very happy.
Awesome.
Next is Joy Hopkins, another soccer player from Napa High School. Joy and I go back a long way. I taught her 20 years ago when she was at Napa High School. Joy was the BBC Defender of the Year in Soccer. She has an accumulative 3.81 GPA and has completed 105 and a half units at Napa Valley College. So Joy has two degrees. Will finish her second degree here this year, so. Joy's also been on the president's honor list every semester she's attended, so, very good student. Then these two young men are off our basketball team, as you can tell by their height. Similar stories, in a way, yet different avenues they've gone to remove themselves here and move on from Napa High, or Napa Valley College. Joe is from Calistoga High School. Both these gentlemen were affected by the fires this fall. They both were displaced, but continued on, not just athletically, but academically. Joe struggled just a little bit when he first got here. He red-shirted, improved his grades, improved, put some weight on, even though he's still skinny as a rail. But very proud of Joe. Joe's received a full scholarship to play basketball at Northern Montana State next fall, so we're very happy for what Joe's done. Sasha is also a soph, or actually, he's a freshman, kind of. He's from Justin and Sienna. So he's moved around, played for prolific preps, went back east, spent a little time at USF, right? Came to us this fall, carries a 3.7 grade point average. Joe completed 20 units in the fall and is ready to complete 26 units this semester. So the reason he did that, one, he was first-team all BBC and is honorable mention all-state. He's received a full ride scholarship to the University of Albany in New York to play basketball and will have three years of eligibility remaining, so, very proud of him. Lastly, I think Sasha would like to say a couple words at the end. Just a couple things that are going on. As of this week, our baseball program has 12 players that have been offered scholarships, and that will be moving on in the fall. Our men's basketball team has five players that have been offered scholarships or financial aid. Our volleyball program has two players that have been offered scholarships or financial aid. Our men's soccer only had two sophomores. They were BBC conference championships, but both of those gentlemen are moving on to Sacramento State and Chico State. And our men's and women's golf teams both have multiple players that will be transferring on after this semester, so I'm very excited for what they've done, not only on the field and in competition, but in the classroom. And on a positive note, too, we did not lose any athletes to academic eligibility this year. So again, that goes back to Rodney, which I think Sasha would like to say a couple words about. Thank you so much for having us.
Got to raise it up. So coming from a four-year, I came from a Division One program, University of San Francisco last year, I'm very familiar with academic success coaches and, you know, people that support you and are in your alley for, you know, academics, you know, because it's not just about the sports, it's also about graduating and, you know, moving on from that. So having Rodney in my alley was really helpful, and, you know, coming in, I didn't have a really a direction on what major I wanted. Not all my units transferred, so having him kind of guide me to what I needed to do so I could be on track to graduate in one year, I owe it all to him. He was, you know, the big factor in that, so I just want to thank him, and he's not here, but thank you for that, so.
They need to be leaving. These two have to shower. Bianca has class and Joy's in 30-minute parking, so they're going to be leaving.
Can I get pictures? Oh, sure. I don't want to stand by them. I don't have to change my. Thank you.
Yep.
Manvier has arrived.
Yeah.
Hello. So we're going to honor you now, Manvier.
All right. I'm waiting.
All right. So we have a resolution here for Manvier Sandhu, who has been our student trustee. And I think what I'd like to do, because he has been working with us so closely, is for each of us to just take a whereas. And trustee Martenson, will you please start for us?
Whereas Manvier Sandhu was elected to serve as the student trustee of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees, and he represented the community with dedication and commitment from May 2017 through May 2018.
Whereas Manvier Sandhu is steadfast in his advocacy for student success as well as community success with his thoughtful approach, which has propelled the college past obstacles and helped him attain personal and professional goals while holding himself to the highest standard of conduct. And.
Whereas Manvier Sandhu recognized the importance of Napa Valley College's role in the statewide and national community college system with collaboration in legislative and executive actions through his contributions, connections, and activities with statewide organizations in Sacramento and Washington, D.C. And.
Whereas Manvier Sandhu was instrumental in enhancing the student-centric focus of the board, promoted social consciousness at every turn, and collaborated effectively with the Associated Students of Napa Valley College. And.
Whereas his dedication, inquiring mind, collegial work style, ambition, and diligent service was of tremendous value to the student body, board, and college through improved civic engagement and student success. And.
Now, therefore, it be resolved that the entire college community extends its appreciation to Manvier Sandhu and wishes him much success in his journey.
Passed and adopted by the governing board of the Napa Valley College Community District in Napa County, California this 10th day of May 2018. And I just want to say that, you know, Manvier took this to a little bit of another level. He showed up, he participated. It was great to see him coming to graduations, like the Police Academy graduation. We, you know, have not had many trustees in the past, you know, attend a lot of the things that we do, so it was good to see that type of contribution from you, Manvier, and we'll all miss you. Thank you. And do we want to get a photo with his resolution? Ron?
Do we have this?
Yes, we do. Ron and I will step, Manvier, and we'll step right over there where Catherine is. And that is an action item, so I do need a motion to approve the resolution.
So move. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Are we doing that electronic?
As you wish. It is now open. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. And once again, thank you, Manvier. All right. Now we have the Phi Theta Kappa awards, and is that Ron, Kathy?
Yes, and Kathy.
Okay.
While Kathy's moving her way up, I want, no, come on up. I just want to talk about Kathy just a little bit. Kathy is celebrating her 15th year this year and was awarded a spectacular pen from PTK.
And your dedication.
I'm not wearing it.
Yeah, but, well, that's okay. Your dedication and leadership is really absolutely in my notice, and we've talked about this. And over the years, it's unbelievable, the exponential students you have, you know, you've touched and talked to and encouraged, and so I just want to give you my congratulations and look to your next 15 years of PTK.
I'm so tired.
So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. So I guess I'll say I'm Kathy Gillis. I'm an English professor, but I'm also the advisor for Phi Theta Kappa, our honor society, and I brought a few friends with me. So I just want to point out a couple of them first. We just had our ceremony, and so first of all, I want to thank the board specifically and Ron for doing the speech at our ceremony yesterday. And hi. Thank you so much for supporting our students. We really very, very, very much appreciate the college's support. It goes a long way for our students. And they get to have, mimic in a small way what you do here and learn leadership skills and making motions and things like that. So the first two people I want to call up really quickly were recipients of our all-California academic team. They were the two students chosen from the college to represent our college. And if they could step up here, there's Sotseki Hernandez and Christopher Beller.
So, hi, everyone. My name is Sotseki. I was one of the recipients, and I just want to say throughout my experience and my president position that I just handed over, it has been an amazing experience. I am definitely a new person, a new, a better student, and I can't wait to use this amazing skills I have learned throughout my future education at Davis. Thank you.
My name is Christopher Beller. I'm really happy to have and proud of myself for being able to win an award like this. Really, in high school, this was not something that was on my mind, and now in college, I'm very happy to have applied myself and gotten to this point. I want to say that the music program here is absolutely incredible. The, it's a music program with adjunct teachers who are all so passionate for what they do. Mark Osten, in particular, is one of the most kind and patient people that I've ever met, and I really appreciate their being here and their nurturing of my and others' musical careers. Thank you.
Now, I would like to introduce outgoing board member, Alani Flores, and our incoming president, Artesha Smith.
Hi. Do I have to do that? I'm Artesha Smith, and I'm holding the new president position with Phi Theta Kappa, and I'm very excited to have this position. We have an amazing board, and I'm looking forward to helping our community and being more involved with Napa Valley College.
Hi, everybody. My name is Alani Flores. I was the VP of Records in this past board, and I am very excited to be taking my skills that I've gained here with all these amazing people that I worked with during the semester at UC Davis when I transferred.
I don't want to forget Hamza, who's sitting right here. He's doing double duty. He's also going to be on our officer team, so let's congratulate him as well. Thank you all to staff and faculty and everyone. Yeah, we'll get the picture. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have 4.3 resolutions honoring faculty members retiring in 2017-18. And if we could have, oh, who's, that's you. There you go.
Well, we are really, really happy to be here tonight to honor five faculty members that are retiring this year. You know, it's an interesting time to do this, as we're in the process of hiring new faculty members right now, and as we have new ones coming in and we have some of our esteemed colleagues moving on. It's an extraordinary experience in being here. I'm going to go ahead on this one. I'm going to just read the names right now, and then I'm going to turn the floor over to a couple of other people that would like to say a few words about the retirees that we are honoring here tonight. So first off, we have Denise Roselli. And do we have Rebecca Scott? Are you here? You want to come on up to the mic with me? So Denise Roselli has been a professor in our English department for many years, and we'll have Rebecca, who has worked with her for many years, come on up and say a few words about Denise.
Oh, I never thought I'd see the day. I'll be nice, I'll be nice. So, oh my God, what are we going to do without Denise Roselli? She has been an incredible part of this campus, and I'm telling you, if you don't know Denise, I'm not quite sure where you've been. When I was hired, she was here when I was hired, and I remember coming into, I was hired as a learning disability specialist, and I coordinated learning services, and she had an office not far from me. And she was there for my support. She has always been my rock, and I think I speak for all of us when I say that. She is the island in the storm. When you think you're going down and you need some advice, you can look out and see Denise. And for me, she usually had a glass of bourbon. Here, try this. And if that doesn't work, try this one. It's 25 years old. No, I mean. The other thing is, is she always has her door open. She is that person in the hallway that when you think that you couldn't get a harder job than teaching, you can go in and sit in her office, and she's always there to give you support and the courage to go on, and usually some really good advice that you can put to immediate use. And she'll also tell you, she's also the person that also gives you the kick in the behind when you're messing up, too. And we all need that from time to time as well. I, we wrote this resolution for her, and one of the things that we need to realize is she was also one of our McPherson distinguished teachers. She is so dedicated to education, and she's kind of a rare person that not only knows how to write, she's an English teacher, but she also knows math and science. Now, that's unusual, right, math and science people? Can you write for us? You can? All right. You can? All right. All right. I, I see evidence. I see evidence. She's also gone up and beyond in all, all areas. She's supportive of all of our incredible writers. She's, she's been part of the Writers Conference, she's been part of, part of the Justin M. West judging, and she started her own scholarship out of her own hard-earned money to support emerging writers. I think I liked the last thing where she says she's consistently, has the best sense of humor and ability to laugh and bring joy to her students and everyone she meets and knows. She's an incredible person and leaves behind a lasting legacy to our college, and she will be missed. The last, the very last whereas says Denise Roselli's image should henceforth be one that appears beside the words courage and hero in all Napa Valley College dictionaries as the undisputed queen of Napa. I, I believe that says it all. You have to stand up. Does she come over, or what do we do? I don't know.
Tell me a few words, Forrest. Oh, okay. I have more than a few words. I'm not surprised.
What a surprise, right? I know. Well, the last name tells, says it all, right? I, I just wanted to take a minute before I acknowledge this lovely whereas document. As many of you know, I've had an interesting seven months. In September of 2017, I was diagnosed at Stanford with two, one not-so-rare, one very rare autoimmune disease, and both of them sort of just made the decision for me that I had to retire because I could no longer teach. And then, in October, my life became a made-for-television movie when my house burned in the Napa fires. So I, you know, moved along, thinking that maybe things would get better, and then this February, my life went from a made-for-television movie to a soap opera, or as my little French grandmother used to call them, my stories, when I suffered a serious heart attack. So it's been challenging and rough, but what I have to say is that I could have never been here today before you, talking to you, you know, in relatively good health, except for, you know, some, some issues with the autoimmune diseases. My heart's in pretty good shape right now, but I couldn't have done it without the family, this, this college community, because from every single group, I received nothing but kindness, generosity, and empathy. And people were very, very caring and loving towards me, giving me stuff, which, when your house burns, you need everything, you know? Not just the things that you would think of, but I needed to go buy Scotch tape, I had to get some tin foil, I didn't have a bottle opener for beer. So, so, all of those, that kindness that came, and the generosity, it came across the board from all the groups, and I was just so touched by it. And, and people are always saying to me, you're so tough, and you're just so able to handle this, and I have to say, I couldn't have done this without the help of administrators, the board, classified, the, and of course, the faculty, especially my division. They've just been so caring and loving and kind to me and my family, and I will just always carry that with me. Having said that, as a teacher, they mentioned earlier, the University of San Francisco, I'm a graduate of the Jesuits, and the Jesuits, I don't know if you, if you know this, but the Pope is a Jesuit, and so he's kind of dear to my heart, because the Jesuits not only prepare you for a scholarly life, but they prepare you for a life of service to others. And I've had two careers that have been very rewarding. The first one was in veterinary medicine, and then the other one is, of course, teaching here at Napa College in the English department. And I just have to say that there's nothing more rewarding than, than, you know, being in the service of others. I always knew that teaching was an important thing, and I always had this sense that I was trying to help my students to become the most proficient readers, writers, and critical thinkers that they could be. In fact, I told every single class, if you ever make it big, you need to acknowledge me. If you, if you write a book, I go on that second page. If you win some money, you buy me a new car. And I'm still waiting, because teachers have the patience of Job. But I, I do have to say that when things were tough in life, and things, especially these last seven months, it was a real lovely escape to get into the classroom and to teach what I, what I know, and to help students along. And I hope I have touched the lives of, of all of my students in a positive way. And the final thing I want to say is, I've always had this mind, been of this mind, that when you leave something, you want to leave it better than you, you came to it. And I think I leave the Language Arts and Developmental Studies a very, very strong and brilliant division. I've worked on lots of the hiring committees, and my goal was to always hire somebody who was a better teacher than me, and I think I've done that, and I think I leave the college in good stead with that division. And I, with that, I just want to thank everybody again for your love and your kindness.
Good evening, and I apologize for being late. Sometimes, all the moving parts grind to a halt for a moment. I have the pleasure of introducing, and I hope she'll come up, our next retiree, Barbara Craig, who is in the same division as Denise, and Rebecca will speak to all that Barbara has done for the college, but I would just like to say personally, I worked with Barbara one-on-one, in my capacity, as curriculum chair. A few years ago, when the state had changed the rules suddenly and very profoundly, and it impacted Barbara's program fairly significantly. And what I can say about Barbara is that she's a champion for students who often don't have the champion or the voice, and she is a wonderful, has been a wonderful bridge to, to helping those students realize their educational goals. She has been a wonderful resource for our students, and she's been a wonderful colleague, Barbara, so.
And I'm going to let you-
Well, I'm beginning to think, maybe it's me, that why they're all quitting, I'm not sure. Sorry, you guys. Barbara is one amazing woman. She has worked tirelessly to provide support at every level to our students at our college who have learning disabilities. And for those of you who don't know what a learning disability is, it's actually you have an average or above IQ. You have to have an average or above IQ to have a learning disability. But for some reason, you have problems in, in an area, and Barbara has not only worked with those students in the classroom, poured her heart and soul out to them, but she actually brings them in and gives them IQ tests. She could give one to you, too, so if you need one, let us know. She's still got a few more days, right? But beyond that, I want to follow up what Amanda's talking about, because Barbara has been not only the person who has tested the students with learning disabilities, but she provides instruction in the classes that give those students the, the ability to go on, and sometimes to, to climb almost seemingly impossible hills to get into our transfer-level classes. And she has been there for those support, for those students, thousands of students, I have to tell you. And she started working here, actually, in 1983, when we had a program at the State Hospital, and she was faculty there and worked with those students. That program no longer exists now, but she did meld into our Students with Learning Disabilities Program. She is, one thing, I could go on and on about her skill sets, but I want to say something about her incredible passion, her dedication, and genuine kindness. Barbara is the kindest, most wonderful person, and it has been just an honor working and knowing her. And Barbara, you're going to have to come up here and give a speech. Your favorite thing.
I have a few words. Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Amanda. I really don't have anything to say, but thank you, and I've enjoyed my many years here. And I do appreciate all the support. Like Denise said, it's like a big family. We couldn't have done it without everybody we have, everybody in our department, just everybody. So thank you.
I think you're supposed to come stand. Oh, is that?
Stand with him if you wish.
All right. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving along. Next, I would actually like to ask Bob VanderVeld to come up. The next person that we would like to honor here tonight is Rich Delavalle, and I will let his dean speak about him.
Dr. Fall, if you could join us as Division Chair for Science, Math, and Engineering as we collaborated on this. President Akusso, Dr. Kraft, members of the board. In the famous Dartmouth College case, the college's lawyer, the great Daniel Webster, defended his alma mater by saying, "It is, sir, a small college, but there are those who love it." The same is true of Napa Valley College, and this afternoon, we are honoring faculty who have helped make it true. Between them, astronomy professor John Charlesworth and professor, geology professor Rich Delavalle teach the heavens and the earth. When most people go on vacation, they return with tans and perhaps tacky tourist souvenirs. When Rich Delavalle goes on vacation, he returns with some very heavy rocks, and he uses them in all of his classes. Over the past year, I have had the pleasure of getting to know Rich and his work, and it's my honor to propose for your consideration the following resolution, and if I could, I'll just read it. Whereas, Richard Delavalle began his career as a member of the faculty in 1989, and has been an invaluable member of the Science, Math, and Engineering Division and campus community for 29 years. And, Richard Delavalle exhibited flexibility and willingness to work wherever needed to best serve the students and programs in geology, geography, earth science, and GIS. And, whereas, Richard Delavalle consistently and steadfastly made quality education for students his top priority. And, this one, you get to do.
Which one? Richard Delavalle has led with dedicated service as the Division Chair for Science, Math, and Engineering for nine years. And?
Whereas, Richard Delavalle has been the recipient of several grants that funded the GIS program, hazmat training, a complete computer lab, and a wealth of technical equipment and samples for the student of geology, geography, and earth science. And whereas, Richard Delavalle has been responsive to the needs of the college by lending us time, support, and leadership for, among other things, Mesa Fairs, summer bridge programs in STEM, and field trips to local geologic sites. And whereas, Richard Delavalle has partnered with local and statewide agencies to enhance education in the earth sciences and bring honor and recognition to the college and himself. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees and the entire college community join in extending to Richard Delavalle our sincere thank you and best wishes as he moves on to new adventures. Rich, come on up.
I like that Steve talked about the Division Chair role, which was an interesting role. So I want to just thank everybody. I mean, I've had a great time here. It's been, I mean, wonderful collecting all those rocks, and I will leave them, because my house is too small to have them. And my wife-
But, Rich, they're too big to move.
Actually, I wanted to have a rock garden, and maybe in the next few years, I might plan one for you guys. I think it'd be fun. So, but I, I've just enjoyed it, and you guys have been very helpful to me. I've worked at the chancellor's office as well, and this, this college has really looked on quite favorably, just to let everybody know. So, thank you very much.
So, as his dean, I will note that Rich has a class waiting for him, so get back to work. You all probably know John Charlesworth far better than I do. I don't think I will, as a lawyer, violate FERPA by disclosing to you that one of his former students is now our interim vice president of instruction, Eric Scherer. And Eric, I have access to the records, and I believe it was a passing grade, but since I'm on the record, I won't attest to that. Professor Charlesworth, 53 years of service, yes, 53 years of service, constitutes a remarkable achievement. I've been here just about a year, but that represents less than 2% of his service, which, by the way, is more than 2/3 of the college's 75-year history. I met John last fall at one of his famous star parties at Skyline Park. He introduced us to the many constellations, and it was as if he was introducing us to his friends, because he knew all their stories, he knew all of their histories and all of their myths. The very next day, that ridge caught on fire. And yet, the next semester, he returned to the same place to give another star party, hashtag Napa Strong. It is therefore my high honor to propose for your consideration the following resolution. Whereas, John Charlesworth began his career as a member of the faculty in 1965, and has been an invaluable part of Napa Valley community for 53 years. And whereas, John Charlesworth has been an integral part of Napa Valley College for more than 2/3 of its 75-year history. And whereas, John Charlesworth exhibited flexibility and willingness to work whenever needed to best serve the students and programs in chemistry and astronomy, retiring from full-time service only to return to teach two classes each year. And whereas, John Charlesworth consistently and steadfastly made quality education for students his top priority. And?
John Charlesworth worked tirelessly for the campus community and the public, providing night observation sessions, lunar eclipses, and sunspot observations, becoming beloved by all as Starman.
And whereas, John Charlesworth stayed current in the field of chemical and astronomy education, constantly pursuing professional development in teaching and technology. And whereas, John Charlesworth has taught generations of Napa Valley College students to look to the stars, touching the lives of more than 17,000 students. And whereas, John Charlesworth has left a lasting legacy to Napa Valley College and to every student who ever had the privilege of taking one of his classes. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees and the entire college community join in extending John Charlesworth our sincere thank you and best wishes upon his retirement. Again.
I won't take much of your time, but something's happened the last seven years that delighted me in the college, and I want to share it with you. I have four grandchildren, and I'm very close to, and they started attending Napa College seven years ago. Two have since graduated and have gone on, and two are still students here. And I kind of pumped them for information, you know, because I've been here a long time, and I know lots of the faculty, but I, I had a hard time, honestly, believing they worked as hard as I did. And so I, I just, so I started asking the grandchildren, what does so-and-so do, and what does so-and-so do? And to my delight, I found out that they had excellent instructors between them. I guess they've had about 250 units, so they've had over 70 students, 70 teachers. And all of them were excellent, except for one, and to, she falls credit, the one was an adjunct professor who had recently been hired, and didn't pan out, and wasn't here the next year, and that's what, the way it's supposed to work. And so I'm really- And so, I'm really, so I'm really feel honored to be part of the faculty because it's an outstanding faculty. Thank you. I forgot to tell you, I also, not only did I pass Eric Scherer, I also passed Michael Baldini.
I think that was my father.
And finally, Bob, if you'd like to come up. Our final retiree that we're going to honor tonight is Donna Geiger. I'm glad you said Donna, not me. I was, would have been surprised. Good evening. As Eric mentioned, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. And unfortunately, Donna was unable to attend, so I would like to say a few words on her behalf, or not on her behalf, but some words about her as well as the honor of presenting the resolution. Donna, relatively speaking, in comparison to the other retirees, is a relative newcomer to the college, a little more than a decade, but no less impactful. Her time here, she's been here for 12 years, and she was actually an alum of the Napa Valley College nursing program. So, what we find is many of our folks who come out, go out, get their degrees, get their nursing licenses, they go out and they come back, and they come back to serve the students of Napa. Donna, as some know, and some don't, is an intensely fierce advocate, and when she has her, when she feels strongly about something, she has no qualms about letting you know, both pro and con. But one of her very strong points of advocacy is for students. If she feels a student has a very good point or can make a difference, she's on their side, and she works hard to do that. And I've had the honor and sort of sometimes the scary opportunity to be on the receiving end of that. But Donna, when she came to me, like so many in this, in the area, Donna lives in Sonoma Valley, and she was impacted by the fires. Her primary residence was not lost, but much of her property and several outbuildings were lost. And as the process was going through, and you could see on everybody's face the shock, but when she came to me and informed me that she was thinking about retiring, I invoked what I usually do, is I say, "Well, take a minute. Are you, do you really want to retire? What is it? Is the fire? Because, you know, you have support." And she just sort of leaned back in her chair, and she said, "No, it's time. There's things I need to do and tend to her family." So, you know, when folks say that, you take it to heart. And so, we're going to miss Donna, and so it's my honor to present to you a resolution on her behalf. Whereas, Donna Geiger was hired as a full-time faculty member in 2006 and has been an invaluable member of the Health Occupations Division and the campus community for 12 years. And whereas, Donna Geiger earned her associate's degree in nursing at Napa Valley College and returned later in her career to serve the students of the greater Napa community as a nursing educator. And whereas, Donna Geiger consistently and steadfastly put quality education for students as her top priority in the associate's degree in nursing program. And whereas, Donna Geiger provided valuable education to students in the greater Napa, Sonoma County areas by serving as an instructor of basic life support, CPR, and advanced cardiac life support courses. And whereas, Donna Geiger stayed current in the field of nursing education, constantly pursuing professional development in teaching and technology. And whereas, Donna Geiger provided valuable and indelible expertise in the creation and implementation of the curriculum of the associate degree in nursing program. And whereas, Donna Geiger has left a lasting legacy to Napa Valley College and to every student who ever had the privilege of taking one of her classes. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees and the entire Napa Valley, entire college community join in extending Donna Geiger our sincere thank you and best wishes as she moves on to new adventures. So, I want to just end quickly on this agenda item and just thank everybody. All of the retirees tonight, I have had the absolute pleasure of serving with you, of being your colleague, and learning from you, most importantly. Thank you for showing me how to do this with grace. It's been an honor. Thank you.
And now, the board has the honor of approving these resolutions. So, if I could get a motion?
Second.
Iverson moves, and second was Segura.
All right. Here we go. We move on to 4.4 Faculty Emeritus.
So, you've heard about how wonderful all of them are. So, this is also for the board's consideration, and this is for emeritus status for four of the faculty members that we just introduced on their retirement. The emeritus status is an honorary title that's awarded to recognize the distinguished and honorable service of retirees and to encourage continued association with the college. Emeritus status may be granted to qualified academic, classified, and administrative staff upon retirement or other separation from the district. And so, with that, I would like to ask the board's consideration for approving the emeritus status of Barbara Craig, Donna Geiger, Richard Delavalle, and Denise Roselli.
Thank you. Can we get a motion?
So, move.
Baldini makes the motion, and Iverson, second. 4.5 McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award. Eric?
Back at it again. Okay. Give me just a moment here. So, there are two people in the audience who I would like to have stand up right now. Dr. Stephen Fall, if you could come up here and join me, and Paul Wagner, if you could also come up here and join me. So, I will keep this one short because tomorrow is the day where we do the long honoring and we embarrass them a little bit. And I have a good story about Steve that I will definitely wait to tell until tomorrow. Yeah, a smaller group to embarrass him in front of. As you know, every year, we honor faculty members here at the college with the McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award. This year, I am absolutely thrilled and honored to present to you Dr. Stephen Fall from Chemistry and Paul Wagner from our viticulture and winery technology program as this year's recipients of the McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award. Dr. Fall has been at Napa Valley College, has taught here for 33 years? That is correct, and has been teaching for 40 years. His roots here at Napa Valley College are very deep. I actually knew Dr. McPherson, and we'll get into that a little bit more. Paul Wagner has been in our viticulture and winery technology program for many years and is also an esteemed professional in the winery industry as well, and has been an extraordinary resource for our students that are entering into that field and continues to teach for us to this day with extraordinary success with our students. To both of you, I'm really honored to do this with you here tonight and a pleasure to work with you. Thank you so much.
John Charlesworth was on my hiring committee the year that I got hired, and occasionally, he'll remind me that I was the number-two choice. Shared an office with John for 25 years until his retirement, and I got to tell you, I love Napa Valley College. This is, this has been my life, my love for my entire teaching career. I applied to exactly one job in my entire life, and I got it. John hired me. So, it's, for me, when I come to school, I always tell people that I've never worked a day in my life. I've just always gone to school. I don't think of coming to the college as being work. It's my passion. It's my love. It's the thing that I, that I, I wake up in the morning, and I look forward to coming. I get here early. I always leave late. My wife tells me, or asks me, "When are you going to be home?" I say, "Well, I'm out of class at 1:30." She says, "Well, I'll see you at 6:00, right?" And that's about, that's about right because I truly, truly love what I do. You know, somebody asked me one time, "Do you go home and think about chemistry? You know, do you do chemistry?" I go, "No, of course not, but I do, don't I, for..." Yeah, I do. I do. Yeah, yeah, I do. I go home and I, and I sit down behind a computer, as you know, probably heard that I've written a textbook, because I just love what I do, and I wanted to share more and more of what I am and who I am with my students and try to improve the education here at a low cost for our students. So, it's, I want to thank everybody that voted for me, that, or voted for, that wrote in, and vote, that wrote in and nominated me. I don't know who you are, but I want to thank you, thank you all. It is a very, very humbling experience, so I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight and for this great honor. Thank you.
So, there are a number of teachers of California elementary schools right now who must be shaking their heads in utter astonishment. I was always the kid in the back of the class that was just holy hell to manage, and my approach to teaching has always been exactly that. If I can keep that kid entertained, the rest of the class is going to be just fine. What has made that a bit of a challenge in the VWT program is we get a very different kind of student. Average age in our program is between 30 and 40 years old. I have taught classes where the students included MBAs from the University of Michigan, Stanford, NASA rocket scientists. I still remember explaining one complicated point to my class, and one of the students raised her hand and said, "This is really complicated. I'm not sure I understand it." And the NASA rocket scientist, who had two BSs and a PhD as well as being a rocket scientist, stood up and said, "I'm a rocket scientist, and it's confusing to me, too." So, I knew I'd done a particularly good job of teaching that topic, but what those students have done is forced me to be a really good teacher because you can't teach smart people unless you are really on your toes. So, I agree, this is a fabulous place to teach. That program, 100% job placement out of that program. People who take our program and leave the VWT program get jobs. 450 students. It's an amazing program with amazing bunch of students, and the fact that they let me teach there just seems absolutely insane, so thank you.
Just as a quick reminder for the board, the reception for McPherson in the long form of these speeches is tomorrow. We're going to be in the lobby of the Performing Arts Center from 12 to 2 o'clock tomorrow, and I wanted to thank trustee Jennifer Baker for serving on the McPherson Selection Committee with me again this year. Thank you for that. And with that, thank you.
4.6 Presentation on the Nursing Program and Resolution in Honor of National Nurses Looks like Bob Harris.
I'm back. We do the resolution first or the brief presentation? Is there?
Go ahead and do your presentation and...
Okay. Okay, so, welcome, welcome. Nice to be back. Four years ago, I was called to Dr. Juney's office in the VPI, and he said, "Bob," he goes, "Got a proposition for you." And I said, "What might that be?" He goes, "How'd you like to be an interim dean over Health Occupations?" And I said, "Well, what does that involve?" And he gave me the rundown, and I took a seat and thought for a moment. But it involves all of our health education, health professionals' programs, and the nursing program. And over the years, the nursing program, in the four years that I've been there, has undergone some significant changes. There's been challenges, there's been some outstanding successes. So, rather than listen to me drone on, what I'd like to do is bring up our program director and professor Janice Ankenman, as well as professor Regina Orozco and professor Maria Biddenbach. Janice and Regina will give a brief presentation on the program, and then we will do the nurses' resolution with everybody here. So, please, Janice, Regina, and Maria, why don't you come up and we'll...
We always work as a team. Hi, I'm Janice Ankenman. I am a nurse. I have been a nurse for 41 years now, and my feet feel it. I just wanted to speak about the nursing program here at Napa Valley College. So, we have a registered nursing program, which is associate degree, and we have a vocational nursing program. We have 17 registered nurses on campus pretty much all the time routinely between student health services and our SIM lab and our nursing faculty, some of which are adjunct. We have about eight adjunct that are here routinely every semester and probably another 20 that rotate through and work with us. We have one registered nurse who runs our skills lab. We have one registered nurse in the health services office, and four, I'm sorry, seven full-time tenured faculty that are registered nurses. We have nurses that have been here for five years, up to 53 years of being a registered nurse, not here on campus for 53 years, but being a nurse for 53 years. Our VN program, Vocational Nursing Program, started in 1963, and our associate degree registered nurse program started in 1970, from all the records that I could pull. And that means that we have graduated over 1,800 registered nurses from our program over these years, and over 1,800 vocational nurses from this program over the years. We have specialties in pediatrics, obstetrics, mental health, geriatrics, palliative care, neurology, nephrology, cardiology, and critical care. So, all of us have different realms of specialty that we have practiced in and sometimes continue to practice in while we are teaching so that we can remain current. We have worked hard to keep this program current, and we want to thank all of the nurses who have worked here before us because they have created this program over time and have kept it going. And I'm sure there will be many nurses after us who will continue with this program and keep it going as well. I wanted to introduce Regina to you. Regina is a professor as well, and she started her nursing career here at Napa Valley College and is now back teaching and continuing to go to school as a student. So, I'm going to let her talk to you about her journey.
Good evening, everybody. So, I was asked to talk a little bit about my journey and how I got here as a registered nurse. So, I started here with my prerequisites. I was actually in Mr. Charlesworth's chemistry class, and I actually have to feel quite honored because it was one of your last chemistry classes, and I felt great because I learned so much in that class that I still use to this day with drug dose calculations, so. And then, when I got into the nursing program, I have to be honest, I didn't really know much about nursing because nobody in my field is in, and my family is in nursing, and absolutely nobody ever said, "Go and be a nurse." So, I just kind of found my way here. I love the sciences. I love helping people. I love to be in that whole entire field. So, the first day that I walked into the nursing program, I had no idea what I was getting into. And it wasn't until I actually was with Professor Biddenbach that she started teaching me what I needed to know and realizing, that's how it all comes together. So, I have to say that I owe a lot of my career, and even coming back as a professor to Professor Biddenbach, because she did an amazing job of getting me to understand what the field of nursing was truly about. And so, when I started working on the floor and realizing it's more than just touching and talking to people, but it really is about making sure that they're safe and making sure that they're getting what they need and advocating for those patients, as well as putting them in the center. And over the years that I've been actually a nurse now, I've been a nurse now for 14 years, I've realized that it's changed in the dynamics, but the core of nursing is still exactly the same. We're still here for our patients, and we're still here to make sure that we advocate for them along the way. I also was very blessed... along the way. Um, I also, um, was very blessed because after three years of, um, working as a nurse, I went straight from here, worked as a nurse, went and got my bachelor's degree right away at Sonoma State University and then got hired on here, three years after graduating from the program here. So I was very blessed. And as soon as I got hired on here, um, I started working as a professor for OB because that's what I do. I'm a labor and delivery nurse. Um, and that's actually all I've ever done is labor and delivery. And so I started teaching here and while I was teaching here, I was also going to school and getting my master's degree in nursing education. So I spent those first two years as a teacher here feeling a little overwhelmed because not only was I going to school, I was still working part-time as a nurse and I was also still raising three children at, young children at home. And it was during that time that I had lots of mentorship from Professor Ankenman, from Professor Bittenback and from all the wonderful colleagues that I still continue to work with today, who at one time, some of them were my professors, which I have to say has been awesome. Um, Professor Duffy as well, who's not here today. Um, and so, um, during that time, I've grown, I've been here now for 11 years and I've gotten all those things that I've learned from everyone in, not only in the field of nursing, but also from all my colleagues. And I've been trying to pass that on to our students as we go along. It's amazing how they come in still very, you know, deer-eyed and still not knowing what's going on. And the image of nursing is so poor in the community. You know, we're seen as people who follow orders and we're seen as, you know, this type of person and that's not who we are. We actually have our own independent practice and we do critically think and, um, I think not, you know, as you know, for much of the media, they don't ever get too much correct, right? So, um, anyway, so currently, um, so currently I'm still teaching. I'm still working part-time as a, uh, labor and delivery nurse on the weekends at Santa Rosa Kaiser. And I decided, uh, two years ago to go back to school. So I'm currently at UC Davis, working on my PhD. And, um, I'm in nursing education still and I'm working on, uh, two projects. Actually, one of them is microaggressions and how they affect students in the, uh, classroom setting with group dynamics. And then I'm also working on my own research, which is on, uh, the LD, uh, LVN, excuse me, the LVNs and the RNs and why we have such a disparity in the minorities that join our profession. And so we're trying to look at how we can incorporate more of our ethnic diversity and make it a, um, more equal playing field. So that's what I'm currently doing. Um, and then I have to give a little shout out because not only did I start here, but my own daughter started here as well. And she currently is an ICU nurse at the Queen of the Valley and kind of followed in all her footsteps. Janice Ankenman, of course, also part of that, um, journey for her too. So Napa Valley College has been very dear to my heart. I've learned so much and I would not be where I am without this, this, um, actual program. And I think there's so many students who feel exactly the same way. I've been offered positions at other colleges and I have no interest of going into anywhere else. Sonoma State, Solano Community College, I have to say, all these faces, I love working with you guys, even if I only see you once in a great while. So, thank you very much.
And if that's not enough, during the fall semester, she was planning and putting on a wedding for her daughter.
And son, and son, right?
Two weddings.
Yeah, so, so when Regina finally goes to sleep, it'll probably be for quite a while. So, um, so at this point, um, as many people may or may not know, this, uh, March, this, this week is National Nurses Week.
Yes, this week.
Yes. Okay, so, um, and actually, I think much of the credit, um, for recognition in the last several years should go to, to, uh, Maria Bittenbach because I think she brought, she brought it forth and it, several years ago, we started the process. So in honor of National Nurses Week, I'd like to, to forward to you the, the resolution as follows. Whereas the Napa Valley College Associate Degree Nursing Program was started at the request of the community, which expressed a need for registered nurses, and whereas the Napa Valley College Associate Degree in Nursing Program admitted the first class of students in 1970, and whereas the Napa Valley College Associate Degree in Nursing Program graduated as first class of students in June 1972, and whereas the Napa Valley College Associate Degree in Nursing Program has continued to support the need for registered nurses in the local community and surrounding areas, whereas, and whereas since 1990, National Nurses Week is celebrated annually from May 6th, which is known as the National Recognition Day for Nurses through May 12th, which is the birth, birthday of Florence Nightingale, the founder of modern nursing, and whereas National Nurses Week is a time of the year to reflect on the important contributions that nurses make to provide safe, high-quality health care. And whereas, whereas the, the nurses, faculty and staff of the Napa Valley College Associate Degree in Nursing Program support and honor each other, along with the other nurses from Napa Valley College and various clinical agencies who collaborate with us in the education of our future nurses. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the entire college community join to acknowledge and honor the nurse faculty, both full-time and adjunct, of the Associate Degree in Nursing Program, the Vocational Nursing Program, the Psychiatric Technician Program, the EMS Program and other nurses at Napa Valley College. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board, if we could have a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Second. Moved by Baldini and second by Baker. You may vote now.
I'm missing trustee Baldini and trustee Rios.
Again?
Give your money back, Raphael.
Just you, Rios? I don't see it. I'll mark you. Okay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, and now we have, uh, an honoring special recognition of community education chef Barbara Alexander. And Alyssa, I believe you're going to, uh, tell us more.
So, uh, as you know, community education is a unique program within Napa Valley College. It is the lifelong learners and the enthusiasts who take the community education classes, but we have an extremely unique, um, and extremely valuable to the industry program that we've had since 1997. Now, we've got someone in the room who's worked at it for 16 years and really made what the Napa Valley Cooking School is. It's Barbara Alexander, Chef B. Barbara, um, the woman who makes the kitchen tick, the woman who makes us all happy to be at restaurant and, uh, enables us to sell out 643 reservations in less than 24 hours this year. Um, it really makes things tick up there. But we're here to honor her as an educator because she is an outstanding educator and a true leader in the industry. For the force of her personality and her work as an artist, she's actually quite modest. And, uh, it took a little bit of pulling to get her to come here today. Um, but, uh, she is here and I'm going to have her say a few words in a minute here, but I'd like to read the resolution. Whereas chef Barbara Alexander worked at the Napa Valley College for more than 16 years tirelessly and fearlessly leading the Napa Valley Cooking School. And through her work, chef Barbara gained a devoted following of thousands of students, including 250 fine dining professional chefs now working all over the world, who will never, ever forget to skim their stocks. And as a teacher, Barbara continually set the standard of achievement at its highest height, its greatest height, and personally made sure every one of her students, no matter background or past experience, reached it. She's truly amazing that way. If you, if you're not sure what you're doing in the kitchen or what you're doing in the dining room or what you're doing in a social situation, Barbara will make it right. And I've never, ever seen an educator, uh, in all my years of working in education at all levels, to the skill that she has. Barbara delighted thousands of guests each year with her dynamic and creative production of the cooking school's restaurants, never once disappointing any in attendance or missing the real-world opportunity for her students in the teaching kitchen as they completed their semester's unorthodox final exam. How many of you are going to be part of that final exam? I hope so. Whereas, and whereas with her infectious enthusiasm and boundless energy, Barbara inspired her students to have pride and honor in creating meals worth sharing, bread worth breaking and a career worth pursuing. And whereas with a deep understanding of the interconnectedness of food, people and the planet, Barbara grew the cooking school's programs in ecologically responsible and sociologically thoughtful ways, sourcing ingredients locally, exploring a rich diversity of cuisines and cultures, planting gardens, raising chickens, composting and integrating an ethos of respect and responsibility in all aspects of her work. And whereas chef Barbara successfully established a sterling reputation for the Napa Valley Cooking School as a premier culinary institute that provides our community with a unique source of talent and content-rich experience in the culinary arts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the entire college community join in extending to Barbara Alexander, Chef B., our sincere thank you and best wishes as she moves on to new adventures. Barbara, Chef B., come on up here.
Thank you very much. I don't really need the microphone, but I'll do it up there. Be polite. Um, I didn't really come prepared to say anything. I, something happens when I take my chef's whites off. I can scream and yell and talk all day long and then as soon as I take off my jacket, I become all like weird and insecure. Um, uh, I'd like to, uh, just say thank you so much to all the board members. And what's really frightening is that I actually had to ask Joanne instructions on how to get to the administration building after 16 years. So maybe I should have come down here a little more often. Um, but I know that we are sort of distant up there and, um, but we, we feel the love from down here a lot and we really love it when you come up to restaurant. We're very busy for restaurant. Um, it's going to be great. Uh, we've planned the menu with my coworker, Louis Hesong, and who was one of my students. Um, I don't have too much to say. It's been fantastic. I've loved it. Um, I hope that the college supports and the board, of course, supports the Napa Valley Cooking School going forward to remain with the integrity that it has right now because it's very well-regarded in the, in the industry and it's an awesome cooking school. Um, I know that I came here 16 years ago. I didn't need glasses. I could light the pilot lights on the stove with, and still get up from my knees without using my hands. And my hair was brown. Um, but, um, so it's been an awesome ride. I've loved every minute of it. Thank you so much to all the board. I, I know I see a lot of you at restaurant and it's great and I love to see you. Thank you very much and thanks to Alyssa. Michelle Nano as well.
You can make a selfie, Scott.
Let me know if you can't get a reservation.
Thank you. Congratulations. We will miss you, chef Barbara. All right, if we could vote, board, on the resolution. Can I see a motion?
So moved.
Second. Baker. Motion's and Segura, second.
Voting is now open.
All right, and last but certainly not least, student ambassador appreciation and Jolie St. Clair.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and esteemed members of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees. My name is Jolie St. Clair, supervisor and coordinator of the NVC Welcome Center and Student Ambassador Program. I am here tonight to spotlight the contributions the students of the Napa Valley College Welcome Center Student Ambassador Program have made and to present a small token of appreciation to those students who have filled this role in exemplary fashion. Since opening the Welcome Center in 2011, student ambassadors have been instrumental in providing invaluable registration assistance and referrals to other campus services to all students. Because of their dedication and commitment to service, the Student Ambassador Program has proven to be extremely effective in creating a bridge that connects students with the resources and information that is most crucial for their educational success. Their knowledge of the college's educational mission and its priorities has improved the quality of services for the Napa Valley College student body. And moreover, they have clearly demonstrated a positive attitude and willingness to help whenever needed, which reflects the leadership and core values that guide our college. Therefore, on behalf of student affairs, I would like to award the certificates of appreciation to student ambassadors. NIE Fragoso, Daniela Garigos, Hector Mauricio, Jessica Seha, Dylan Sechow and Scarlett Corillo. In recognition of your dedicated service as a student ambassador during the 2017, 2018 academic year, please accept our heartfelt thanks and gratitude for all that you have done and all that you continue to do. We commend you for your continuous contributions and generous assistance and for going above and beyond the call of duty in delivering excellent customer service to NVC students and the Napa Valley community at large. In addition, I would like to extend a special recognition to those, these two particular individuals, Hector Mauricio and Jessica Seha, for their noteworthy service. When I think of what defines true leadership, I often see it as a willingness to go above and beyond the call of duty. We, as leaders, know that this does not always mean working five days a week from nine to five. There is often no overtime pay or forthcoming accolades, only the goal of accomplishing the mission. As leaders, we know that unseen virtue brings about visible rewards. And oftentimes, it is the small things that make the difference. We encourage and support our students in achieving their personal and educational goals, but they too must often go above and beyond in order to be successful. I applaud these leadership traits in a student who is willing to go above and beyond on behalf of others. I have observed Hector assisting students in the Welcome Center, although not scheduled to work that day. I often see him remain after his shift has ended, if necessary, in order to assist students when we are extremely busy. I have observed Jessica extend much of her personal time to assist students who are having difficulty with an assignment or to take the lead over a task when necessary. Your willingness to help wherever there is a need demonstrates the kind of compassion and dedication that will help this college grow to its full potential. It is with great honor and humbleness that I present to you these special awards for meritorious service to NVC students, Napa Valley College and the entire Napa Valley community. I want you to know that you make a difference and I thank you. We can have cake now.
No, not yet, Jolie. Uh, I want to just say just a, just a couple of words. Um, I, um, Jolie has, has been with us for, for a few years with Welcome Center. And every year, this, this project just develops even better and better and better. It's a role model project that we have, uh, I would say throughout the state. But also, it's, it's her role modeling to these students and, and other students that have made them great individuals that go on after, after NFA College to, to do, uh, bigger and better things. So I want to thank you, Jolie, for, for your exceptional work and more than else, for your leadership. You have really done an exceptional job and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I move to, as Jolie says, recess to cake.
Are we going to approve the resolution?
Yeah, I would say 10 minutes for, uh, cake recess and then we'll come back for public comment and closed session. comment and closed session.
Thank you. It's May.
Yeah. Only once a year.
You're right about Karen.